30th, boy, time flies when you're having fun. To order and Katie, you may not be able to do this, but if you can, I know you're reaching out to Dave Donnelly. If you're not available, I'll just go ahead and do roll call, but if you can, can you do that or do I need to do it?
Sorry, just getting this ready for Dave Donnelly and for getting him connected. President Marsette?
Here.
Member Bellamy?
Present.
Member Mitchell?
Present.
Member Hildy?
Present.
Member Holloman? Member Vakalas?
Present.
And I'm sorry, I am not reading off of a list. Did I miss anyone of my board members?
I don't think so. We'll wait to hear from, well, when Dave Donnelly joins, we'll let people know that he's on. So the purpose of this meeting today is as a board, we've really been trying to, I don't want to say back off and not be engaged, but there's been so much going on in our school district and so much for our staff to, you know, just meet and you can't even anticipate what's going to happen next, but putting something in place so that we can continue our mission and being able to do that without having a lot of questions from the board. They have been sending us updates, but I thought at this point, we're starting classes tomorrow, it would be nice to have a special meeting since our next board meeting is a week away and just kind of get some information and give the board a chance to ask some questions. So Dr. Bishop, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to you for the presentation and we'll wait until after the presentation and then board members can make comments or ask questions. So write your questions down so you don't forget them.
Thank you, Madam President, and Mike Fleckenstein is going to get the presentation up online. And the team is going to present with me, actually, the team is presenting and I want to say that I've been an honor to work with our administrative team and their teams of teams in our schools to be able to really stand up in about two weeks, really about seven days, online learning for our nearly, you know, forty-seven thousand students. And as you mentioned, our slides are numbered, so if the board member has a question, please be sure to write down that slide number. So when we do go through the questions, we can call back up that slide. There, as I said, are going to be others joining me in the presentation. What we're going to cover are these sections, operations, finance and information technology. Those will be covered in ten minutes. We focused on that last time as we were kind of in that Maslow's hierarchy of needs and shared with the board at the last meeting about what we're doing in those areas. We'll give a general thirty thousand foot overview so you can have a picture. What we want to reserve the other thirty minutes of the presentation time is to really give you a mind's eye of the education that's going on for our students as well as the support for ASD educators. And without further ado, let me turn it over to the operations.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone. Hope you're doing well. Through the President, Tom, our Chief Operating Officer, what I'd like to do is give you a very brief operational update in two areas. So the first is our continuation of our student meal program. Just to reiterate, we are operating from twenty-six schools. Twenty-five of those are neighborhood elementary and one middle school central. And we're also running six meal delivery buses to cover areas that we don't have a fixed school site meal program. So right now, we are averaging about nine thousand five hundred meals daily. In two weeks, we've served one hundred and fourteen thousand meals. And just of note, we've seen some pretty dramatic increase from week one to week two. Week one, we're about forty-six thousand meals. In the last week, we served over sixty-eight thousand. So the good news there is the word's getting out. The next, just want to focus a bit on a population of great professionals and that's our district nurses. They have really responded to the community's need as a, as experts in the medical field and they've really become a municipal resource. Just to kind of talk really quickly about what they're doing. They're performing multiple tasks and just to highlight what they're doing in the city. So we've got nineteen nurses currently working with the Anchorage Health Department in support of their case management. We've got aid and training and again, they're providing their expertise to the health department. We've got two nurses now working in the Emergency Operations Center, serving as case managers for confirmed COVID nineteen patients. And they serve as their medical experts to guide them through their recovery process. Nineteen nurses are also working in the AOC, answering two-one-one phone calls, again, using their medical expertise to assist people seeking information. And then lastly, we are continuing to provide support to our most medically fragile students in the district and four nurses are dedicated to providing that. In addition to the medical care, they're also delivering meals to these students Mondays through Friday. Thanks.
Good evening. This is Jim Anderson. I'm the Chief Finance Officer. Cover three topics very quickly. First, the state did approve or the legislature approved the operating budget this weekend. And it was an additional thirty million dollars for deed. ASD's portion is approximately eight million dollars and Andy and I are already working with the Muni to request an additional two million dollars for the local match. On top of the thirty million, there was six point three million for pre-K grant, which is an increase from this year. More details to follow as specifics come out. Big news for us, state bond debt assistance fully funded. And both the House and Senate did reach a three-quarter vote on Sunday, so the PERS-TURS, which was somewhat at risk, is fully funded. And naturally, I would expect the governor to sign this budget very quickly. This year, the capital budget was rolled underneath the operating budget in order to facilitate their session close. We've been working with Representative Johnson's office for a couple of months now. Recently, with Senator Von Hemmhoff to amend the state's capital budget. So their efforts consolidated about two dozen old ASD legislative grants into one, one point one million dollar ASD earthquake recovery grant. This will be very helpful this summer as we start working on projects that were not in the bond. All of those old grants were site and project specific. So when we closed out the projects, we were unable to use the remaining funds. So this reappropriation, the timing could not be better. On top of, within the state of Alaska, the federal stimulus bill was approved and signed and it provides thirteen point five billion dollars to K-12. The distribution will be based off Title I allocations at state level. And it has very broad use. It can be used from technology, digital learning, curriculum and summer school. The state can hold up to ten percent of the new funding for emergency needs of the state. So we'll work with them to figure out what our share is. We'll be able to hold this in fund too. It won't affect our ten percent gap. And we may be able to move over some of the costs we've currently expended on IT equipment into this grant once we receive the funds. That's all from finance.
Good evening. Mike Fleckenstein, Chief Information Officer for the school district. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk to you tonight. About six areas to talk to you about tonight, but they'll be really fast. And so the first area we've been working on is student connectivity. And on that front, we've done three things. We have worked with local providers to help get families across the district access to free internet. And so ACS, GCI and MTA have all stepped up to the plate on that and they're providing free internet access or upgrades to our families and to our staff, so teachers as well. Beyond that, we've acquired a thousand hotspots and we actually gave out seven hundred and sixteen of those today to students so that they are getting connected at home. And then right now, we're working in a partnership with ACS to install seven large antennas on different areas of town on our schools that will provide hotspots that will cover large parking lot areas, for instance, our high schools and some middle schools so that folks need to drive up in their car and download information or be able to get packets and things that are being distributed potentially electronically. That's another way that they can get connected. Next, student device distribution. We've been working to get Chromebooks ready to go out to students that expressed a need. And today, we were able to deliver fourteen hundred and fifteen of those Chromebooks to ninth through twelfth graders that had a need. And tomorrow, we will do the finish up on that for ninth through twelfth and then we'll start to move down the grade levels, working with instruction. Support to families on this. We have created a helpline for families, so help.ASDK12.org. They can go in and create a ticket and then we have created not only staff of technical folks, but also instructional folks that are staffing those tickets and being able to call folks back and help them out. We'll also have a phone number for them to be able to call in the near future, just in case they're having technology issues and can't put in a ticket. Staff support, we issued laptops to staff that need to work from home that traditionally did not in the past. So we did that over the last week. And we created some applications so that they can access all of the things that they need that were back on their desktops through being remote in a very safe way. So we were able to do that in the last week as well. On the records request front, we're working with high schools and the rest of the schools to try to help with processing records requests that would normally be processed by people coming into their buildings. So that's another partnership that we're working on right now. And then the long-term instructional plan, we are tied at the hip with instruction. That is our mission. And we've provided support with our project management office, so they are on every team from instruction and helping work to organize and communicate this information. With that, that's my update from information technology. Thank you.
So, good evening, Board. This is Mark Stock, Deputy Superintendent. So I'll be giving the Instructional Division update and our team will. We're going to go through three things. We're going to talk a little bit about the elementary and the secondary and also some special education issues. And to put this major issue into context, I remember a mentor of mine, Dr. Harmon, who was my first superintendent when I became a principal. And he was frustrated with the pace of change and he said to me one day, he said, "Before education ever changes in a dramatic way, it will take a major disruptive force from outside of education." And I'm just wondering if we haven't met that force. Few years later, I remember when a software program named Second Life came out. And some of you who are older may remember that, but it was a virtual world where professors and high school teachers who were creative were creating these virtual worlds and they were bringing their courses inside these shelves and students would literally walk their avatars into classroom, sit in a lecture seat in this virtual world and have their instruction in a virtual environment. And I remember saying to our teachers, had a whole auditorium full of teachers and I remember saying, "There will always be a need for teachers." There will not always be a need for a place called school. And maybe, maybe we're there. So what I'd like to do next in the next slide is introduce our team. The team has worked so hard on this over the last two weeks. They've been working seven days a week, long, long hours. And we've been led through this with our project management office, Julia Melson and Julie Shuttleworth. And you're going to hear in a moment from Dan Barker and from Dr. Johnson, from Dr. Knudsen, who isn't speaking tonight, but her team of coordinators and directors did a lot of the content work behind the scenes. And also, one person to mention is Andy Klute from IT and Cindy Anderson, who will be speaking also tonight. And so I guess the key part here is that we have been cross-divisional, cross-platforms, all hands on deck. There's many people in our teams working out of their area, helping pull this project off in just two weeks. And so that's the team. With that, our philosophy was pretty simple. We started with elementary being what we call parents' primary, noting that we can't replace parents in this environment and teachers can't be with them the entire time. In middle school, we have what we call parents' partners, knowing that parents are helping support as they go through this. And in high school, of course, it's independence, preparation for the future. So we had four priorities. Our high school seniors graduating is obviously job number one. But also getting our high school students to earn credit as they go so that they don't get behind. And then in middle school, getting oriented to the online environment, but realizing that that work is supplemental. And at elementary, it's also supplemental, but we're offering online and paper pencil projects as well. So with that, we'll start with elementary. Dan?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dan Barker, your Senior Director of Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share the exciting things we have going on in the elementary division as we prepare to go live with our distance learning efforts. What you see here tonight is really a collaboration of elementary with teaching and learning, secondary and special education. It's critical in this conversation for us to identify that although a distance approach to instruction is possible at all levels, it looks significantly different for learners from different ages. What we're working, when we're working with our youngest learners, our pre-K through sixth grade students, we emphasize that parents are primary in helping students access that learning. Although many of our students may have access to a phone or some other electronic device and already have some independence with it, parents really need and want to be able to control access and monitor activity. Additionally, it's very important for us to acknowledge that a number of our students and families are access insecure, meaning they have very limited or no online access and will not be able to use what we put forward digitally. Consequently, we're working towards three independent access points for learning. Online, digital, a paper learning packet process, which is still under development, and a growing partnership with Alaska Public Media that would use at least some television programming. For our digital approach, we're now coalescing into two main lanes that we need as we move forward for the digital online access point. One of those lanes is developing the content and materials that we can make available for all teachers, pre-K through six on a weekly basis and provide for them to then provide to their students via the digital platform of their choice. The other lane involves developing the capacity of our teachers and providing for them the ongoing professional development and training they'll need to maintain this effort. We put in place a system that allows us to deliver or push weekly learning activities in the core areas of English Language Arts, math and social emotional learning. These activities will be made available to teachers a week in advance and then are available for them to transfer to their preferred platform for sharing with families and students. During this undertaking, we've committed to supporting all of our stakeholders as we move forward. We strive to keep expectations reasonable for our staff who are facing a new paradigm, for our parents, for our parents whose lives in almost all cases have been turned completely upside down. And of course, for our students whose personal learning goals may have just been drastically changed for them and who are dealing with some level of loss and emotion. Okay, so let's take a look at some screenshots and use those as a brief tour of what we've been working on. I like to start in that lane of staff training and ongoing professional development. As we move forward into this work, it's important to note that although this is a radical change of direction for everyone, we have many staff members with high levels of competency and skill working with all these tools. Those folks right now, as I'm sure you can imagine, are pretty popular with our colleagues as they are a big part of supporting this effort and getting things off the ground. What you're looking at here is the Canvas launch page. Canvas is a digital platform that we're using to provide that weekly updated content that I talked about earlier. It's also the tool we're using to provide teachers with training and professional development. Here we see a mini-course designed in-house by our ed tech staff to support teachers in understanding what is available for them to use and it comes with complete tutorials and how best to use each of the tools. Next, we would move to the next slide where we would take a look at the digital platforms and support at the elementary level. All staff are using Canvas to receive the content that we send out weekly. In this situation, it's helpful, I think, to consider Canvas a warehouse that we will fill each week with new learning activities that teachers can go to and pick up. Canvas then becomes the tool that allows us to provide that information for them. It isn't, however, the only platform option for them to use in providing that material, plus whatever else they would like to add to their students. AST staff actually have access to three very effective platform options for teachers to choose from. Seesaw, Google Classroom or Canvas. All three of these tools are capable of accomplishing the task. The difference really comes down to the instructor, the grade level they work with and their ability to access materials they may have previously created. Finally, embedded in the training and launch modules that are provided for staff are schedules like the one you're looking at here with links to both real-time support for ASD staff from ASD staff as well as numerous online training and tutorials. Okay, so now let's take a look at what it appears to a teach, what it appears like as a teacher for the, as the user. I chose to use an example from Canvas rather than Seesaw or Google Classroom because that's the platform that I had personal prior experience with and had used. But it's important to realize that what you're seeing here is what I created. Other versions of the same information can be recreated on the other platforms as well. Along the left-hand side of the screen, you see some of the many different types of items and actions that the teacher can choose to publish or make available for his or her students. You'll see that on the front page, I posted office hours along with a Zoom link that parents could use to participate in a live session with me as the teacher. You can see that below that is listed a drop-in hours for the school that the school would then have staffed by teachers of a comparable grade level. So it might not be your actual teacher, but if you had a more general question and you couldn't connect with the teacher on that particular day during their office hours, you could go here to get that answer. Finally, along the bottom, you'll see three badges that should look similar across all platforms and I'll talk more about those in a moment. Next, here is a look at what the content coming to the teacher would look like. Here we see lesson activity options. These are things that the teacher can capture from Canvas and transfer to whichever platform they chose to use with their class. In ELA, you'll see connections to items for our Reach for Reading curriculum, which is already available in many cases electronically. You'll also see connections and access points for Lexia, which will serve as the skill practice platform for most students. These are, these links also here that are listed here have been, will take you to vetted sites so that they've already been checked for safety, but they have multiple literacy tools and other activities. This is an example, again, from ELA, but we have similar pages put together each week for math and social emotional learning. Again, teachers go to this, pull off what they would use and decide what they send to their students. Now let's take a look at what it looks like from a parent or student view. You'll notice that basically the page looks the same, but it's much more simple and streamlined, a lot cleaner. We still have the office hours posted with the links and access to the modules that the teacher chooses to make available are listed or published on the other side. Across the bottom, you again see those three badges I mentioned before. The learn badge on the left is where students and parents would go to access the learning activities that are provided and updated each week for the teacher. The parent badge on the right is a link that would take parents back to our main ASD webpage where we've housed a large number of links with online resources to support parents with distance learning. And then on the middle badge called schedule, we'll take a look at that with the next slide. Okay, this is an example of a schedule that you would find on that, underneath that badge and it gives parents a recommendation of learning activities for a week. We want to stress that recommended part because we know all families are coming at this with different capacity levels for time, resources, materials, all of that. It's laid out in a very simple format with recommended activities that families could attempt to do daily, others that it's best to attempt every few days and some that might just be weekly. Families can print it out, put it on the fridge door like you would with a chore schedule or they can have students maintain it themselves in a notebook or binder or just reference it electronically. At the bottom of the schedule, there are age and grade level specific recommendations with regards to the amount of time that it's appropriate to spend in each activity. Finally, that brings us to our non-digital access points. And the first of those was that paper packet distribution piece. This has been a huge collaborative effort that really has spanned pretty much every department and instruction and many in operations. And it currently is still going through problem solving. We're committed to having some version of this option available, but there are many logistical pieces to work through. We're currently investigating what mailing and other distributions might be available to keep it safe for everyone from staff and students on down. And then finally, we have the Alaska Public Media Broadcasting piece. Alaska Public Media Broadcasting is putting out a weekday at-home learning schedule with programming targeted toward different school age groups. The TV schedule was developed to help schools and districts bridge the digital divide and provide equitable access to learning for all students at home, regardless of their internet or computer availability. Educational programming here will run on weekdays starting today, March thirtieth, on KAKM and the programming times are blocked for different ages and grade levels. Pre-K through three right now is set for five to seven AM, fourth through eighth grades from seven AM to one PM and ninth to twelfth grades are one PM to five PM. And that concludes my elementary presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. This is Kirsten Johnson. I'm the Senior Director for Secondary Education. And so I'd like to just explain a little of what we're doing at middle and high school moving forward. So when we started our planning for middle and high school, the first priority for us was to look at how we can maintain connections with kids and their teachers. And so we've developed a schedule of office hours that teachers and students are able to access each other via Zoom. And you'll see the schedule on the left, that is the orientation schedule. So that is the first two days, tomorrow and Wednesday, of where students at middle and high school will connect with their teachers, get oriented and start their digital learning journey. And then starting Thursday, April second, the schedule on the right-hand side of the screen is what the regular weekly schedule will look like. And these Zoom sessions are not mandatory for students, but they are an availability for students to access their teachers for help and questions. So focusing just in on middle school and parents' partners, we first started with the different platforms that we could use to provide content for students. And so the two platforms that were chosen at middle school were Apex and Canvas. Canvas is the one that you just saw Dan Barker highlight for elementary. Apex was chosen for language arts and math because we were able to preload that course content and just turn that right over to teachers so that we could get going. Both Canvas and Apex have options for preloaded content for teachers, but on the Canvas platform, there is some original content building going on from our ASD teachers as well. Both platforms allow teachers to supplement what's already preloaded for them, for particular students or for their class, if they so choose. So just taking a little walkthrough Apex here. When students at the middle school level log in for language arts or math in Apex, this is their home screen. So this is what they would see when they first log in. They have their username and password already. So, and then this is the student dashboard that shows up once they log in. So on the left-hand side is a list of their courses. Here you see English one is the course listed. It also gives them their grade to date so that they know where they're sitting with their scores. It shows their progress in the course. So it shows them, are they halfway done? Are they almost done? And it gives them a little gauge on how much time left or how many more lessons that they have to do. And then if there's any overdue assignments there on the left or on the right-hand side, I'm sorry, you see that it will list the overdue activities. So then this is a page of a particular course. So in this case, it is world history. And so when students log in to their course, they get that dashboard page and then they push on whichever course they want to work in. And then this, this is the page that shows up. So each, each page has a tile that you can click on and that is a unit. And so it would lead you through all of the different courses or units in the course. So when you look at overall at all of the Apex classes, they have three basic components, quizzes, tests and then practice and/or journals that they participate in. So the quizzes, there are three to seven quizzes per unit. Students have two attempts to pass each quiz. And if there are specific learning needs for a student and a teacher wants to alter how many attempts they have on that quiz, they can do that to accommodate different students. The test at the end of each unit is a computer scored test. You get one, one attempt unless your teacher wants to alter that for your learning needs. And then along the way, in between quizzes, you have practices and journals that you participate in. And there's varying the activities depending on the course. So when we were looking at parent as partners, we wanted to set some realistic expectations. For many of our middle school students, this is the very first online learning experience they will have had. And so it does take some adjustment to get used to this different type of platform. Additionally, we know that parents have different things going on at home. They may be working. You may have multiple kids at home that they need to manage. And so we wanted to just be really realistic about how we rolled this out for families so that it was appropriate for where they're at. So when you look at the, the expectations, we are starting with a phased-in approach. And part of this phased-in approach is that we focus first on math and English on March thirty-first, tomorrow. If students are able to navigate that well and they're working with their parents and their If students are able to navigate that well and they're working with their parents and their teachers through this process, then on April 6th, a couple of weeks, a week later. We will roll them into a social studies and science course as well. So that gives them a little bit of time the first week to adjust. Then if they are in in their social studies and science courses and that's going well and with all four courses on April 13th, then we can add their elective courses as well. So the other part of the realistic expectations is that all of this is supplemental work. So students are not going to get a fourth quarter transcript rate. However, teachers will continue to give them feedback. So part of the work at the middle school level is going to be working with teacher teams to really assess. The learning needs of each student and how many online courses are appropriate for that student. So some students may only take the language arts and math course because that's our focus. But some students may take all seven courses that they originally were enrolled in during third quarter. So switching over to high school, we have a similar platform in Canvas. We did pick just one platform at the high school level, and I'll explain a little bit more about that later. But much of our content in Canvas at the high school level is built through our high school program. And we have really taken a lot of the work at the high school level and rolled it over into our Canvas platform at the high school division. So all of our high school credits are all of our high school courses will be graded eight with A through S letter grades. So that they can continue to progress to graduation and credit attainment. So Canvas is similar to what Dan Barker showed you at elementary. This is the longest login page for Canvas that students see when they first get to the webpage. Once they log in, they get to this dashboard page. So you'll notice it's a little bit different at the secondary level than the elementary level. So when you're a high school student and you're enrolled in many different classes through your day, each class is a tile here. So you would click on Gothic Lit as an example, if you wanted to work in your Gothic Lit class. Off to the left-hand side, you'll see that there's a calendar option. So that that's a place where kids can keep track of where their assignments are due. And teachers can enter those due dates into their courses. And then additionally, there's an inbox there. This allows parent or not parents, students and teachers to email back and forth to each other right within the Canvas platform. So when you get into a course and you click on that tile, this is what pops up when you first get in there. This is the homepage for a course. So this is an English one course. And you'll notice that there's modules listed off to the left-hand side. So that's where you would. They're equivalent to units as an example. So you would click on modules to keep working. There's also an announcement section. So teachers can post announcements there and then off to the right, right-hand side, you'll see there's a to-do list. So students can keep track of what are the assignments or quizzes or tests that they need to complete as a part of the course. So looking at Canvas, one of the welcome parts to Canvas for high for high school students is that they have to complete. A Canvas orientation quiz. So we know that students really know how to navigate through the Canvas platform. There's also an email quiz that helps with our parent and student contact information. So that we make sure we really know how to get ahold of them. And then just looking specifically at course content within Canvas, this clearly is very different depending on the course itself. So the Canvas platform doesn't necessarily have a set course content. It just depends on the subject that you're teaching. And most of the courses have reading quizzes, discussion questions, all of those different things that you'd see right within the classroom if you are face to face. And then teachers are also able to adjust point assignments and reset quizzes and tests based on learning needs of the students and conversation with the students. So again, we wanted to look at realistic expectations for our high school students. Some of our high school students are very, very experienced online learners and they've done online courses before. Some of our students haven't done any. So we needed to bridge that that gap. And so we at the high school level have a focus starting tomorrow on the four core content areas. Two weeks later, we will launch the elective courses for high school students. And then this is one of the things that I was going to mention later and why we picked one particular platform for high school. We would like, we are proposing to extend the senior work time all the way till the very last day of school as opposed to letting them out early. If they need that extra time to complete their credits. And then for students who need even more additional time past the school year, and this goes through nine, nine through 12. We would, we are going to convert our summer school into an extended four-week program for students who need that extra time to complete their credit and finish their courses. So and then just finally, I just wanted to say that we are looking at a variety of different ways to support different groups of students. Specialized ELL and struggling learners were definitely a focus. So we collaborated with Special Ed and our ELL department and other departments as well. So there's definitely accommodations going on. There are teacher guidance and support being provided with those particular groups. We are doing extra training sessions for teachers. We're also providing interpreters. And then when you look at Advanced Placement, International Bachelor Laureate and Highly Gifted, there's additional training and support being provided there as well. We are also working through an at-home testing option for AP. International Bachelor Laureate on their own has canceled the testing for this year, but. We're still working through the coursework for those students. And then our highly gifted teachers are also developing courses that are appropriate for our highly gifted students. So with that, that concludes secondary and I will turn it over to Cindy Anderson for special education.
So good evening. Again, Cindy Anderson, Special Education Senior Director. So I'm going to go quickly so we get time for questions. So just so you know, IDEA certainly wasn't written for with a plan for a pandemic to happen. So but through the feds, they have given guidance that they their expectations to do our very best, educate all students. Possible understanding that we are going to have some difficulty with that. And so I would say we have to be appropriate and realistic. And also flexible and creative in what we're doing. And so we've been working collaboratively with elementary, secondary, and teaching and learning and IT and basically all divisions to make sure. We're working to meet the needs of all students if at all possible. So just in, as you look, we're looking at a lot of our students accessing general education curriculum and being able to provide access. So for independence as well as additional supports from special education staff as students need it. But also providing specialized services and related services to students who are accessing different curriculum. And then we also want to make sure we're supporting staff and parents through this process as well. So in order to support general education teachers and special education teachers as we work through Canvas and General Ed. You eat, this is just a small snapshot of a very big document and we have this for high school and middle school to support. Math and language arts, and it basically provides suggested scaffolding accommodations for students. Modifications that could be used if students are struggling in the general curriculum as well as additional suggestions. And again, this is built for all for the math and language arts for math for middle school and high school. So for students who access alternate curriculum and special supports. We have developed a platform with what we call buckets. And in those buckets are lessons for teachers to access, to provide supports and services to students with disabilities. But also it's a platform for teachers to add their lessons for to share with other teachers. So we don't have to build from scratch for each teacher, for each student. And it's been a great support for, it'll be a great support for our teachers to be able to send materials based on and teach to goals and objectives for in the IEP. We've also utilized company, companies have provided free curriculum for us, which is phenomenal curriculum. And so I just want to say that that we've added those to the buckets and they can access that, the app material as well. So another piece to our supports is our behavioral supports. We have brought in STAR curriculum that is specifically developed for families. It was actually developed out of China when they were going through their first issues with the pandemic. And SBBS supports, so our site, these behavior supports has a platform for support for their staff and students. And we are also providing behavior training for staff. Our B team, which is our behavior team is on demand. They're going to be able to provide office hours for our teachers. And also be able to, once we get moving and if we have some difficult situations, they'll be able to jump on and. Help with behavior plans and supports at home. So if parents could have help work with their children to get better access to education. There's a parent training component as well. And then of course, we've got Canvas courses for effective skills and social skills in middle and high school. Our related service staff will also be serving students. We were granted a waiver from the state to do teletherapy. And so we're going to be providing that support in in three different ways. First is the parent giving parents instruction to help them be. A provider of service and we'll do it in a consulting collaborative manner. We'll be working with the special education and general education teacher as we do in classrooms to support instruction around related services. And then of course, we can provide direct therapy through teletherapy. Our speech paths, OT occupational therapists, physical therapists in our school psychs. Our school psychs will be able to continue counseling and psych services through teletherapy as well. And so it's very exciting to be able to do that for our students. The other, so we also want to provide training and support for our staff. So we've developed. Training that is specific to what's happening now so that they can serve their students in a better way. In terms of special education supports and services through the online platforms. And we are also building out a separate platform that teachers will be able to, teachers and special education or any staff can access. Where they can go on into independent guided or direct instruction trainings just to. Better their skills when we return to school, just if they have opportunities and time within their day. We want to provide as many opportunities for training as possible. So one of the things that is going to be the most supportive for families is our ongoing communication from our special education staff, general education staff, TAs to. To students and families. And so we've got to, we've got to keep that communication up. We've got to make sure we're supporting the IEPs and implementation of individual services for students. And we, it can be as simple as access to general education through Google Chrome Read Write. It can be something like what you see here, which is a a schedule, a daily home schedule for families. As well as ideas and activities to fill in to help keep kids busy and entertained during the day and improve their learning. And so our goal through this whole process is to scaffold our services and provide as many services as we can. We'll be doing that through, again, access clear to providing packets with lesson plans for families. When we start rolling out for those families who don't have access to technology. And so we want to make sure we get all special, special ed services we can out there for our students.
All right. Thank you, team. I just want to share Madam President and the board that that concludes our presentation. And I can't say enough about the people involved in this. Again, the team that I directly work with as well as their teams. It has been a 12-hour days and we're just happy to be able to to serve our community. Really stand up our teachers to be able to deliver to students. In addition to the work in ASD, a lot of these teams are supporting outwardly statewide. Whether it's Mike Fleckenstein supporting technology acquisition in the state. And Jenny Knutson and other teams really pushing out their academic resources to post on statewide websites. Thank you. And we are happy to answer your questions. Once again, I'm honored to be able to serve in the capacity we are. We had a mission and I think we are. Going to meet it and continue. It won't be perfect. Nothing ever is, but I guarantee we will find. The road bumps and be able to smooth them out so that our parents and families are supported.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop and your team. Again, I think the last time I told you words can express the gratitude and the. Just the job that you guys have done in such a short period of time to be able to accomplish what you've accomplished. But at this time, I would like to open up to board members, board members, if you'd raise your hand. I do see it. Ms. Hildy, you have your hand raised.
Are you calling on me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. That was really informative and I'm just blown away at how quickly and. Such a high level, everything's coming together. My concern at the elementary and middle school level is the supplemental component. I'm afraid parents might hear optional and how is that being communicated, the need for students to continue to learn? And we know summer slide, we have the same thing in this situation if kids really aren't held to a high standard of this is important and hearing that message. And then we, you know, we had talked as a board about retention before and parents being empowered to be a part of that. Is that, is that a concern in having kids who aren't, you know, reading by third grade or whatever comfort level? The parent and teacher are talking about for advancing next year. Are they just going to be advanced based on where they were prior? How will that be determined? And what are those discussions going to look like?
And Dr. Bishop, whoever you'd like to answer that question.
Okay, so President Marsette and through to Member Hildy. So to answer your question, the word supplemental was carefully chosen. We did not say optional. We don't see it as optional. However, we do, we do know that in terms of the accountability factors, when you're going with the primarily digital environment in the beginning. That until we can ensure that every child has access and has a device. And so we've tiered this on purpose. We've started with our high school seniors and working our way through the high schools. We are very confident that we can assure that 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 population will have access to everything that they need. You know, obviously whether they choose to use it or not, I guess will be up to the high school students, but they will have every opportunity. As we move into the K-8 environment, we recognize that not everyone has those. So we will be providing the paper pencil options, especially in the elementary at the very beginning. And we'll work through that. We've got some bumps to work out in the next two weeks with regards to how to do that safely. We had a really good plan until shelter in place became even more restrictive. And now we have to make sure that even the delivery of paper has to be in a, in a, in a way that's safe. So we're working through that. As far as grades, our plan right now is to the teachers will offer. Grades for feedback through the middle school in that environment. It won't go into their final transcript right now. Our plan is to use end of third quarter. Grades as the the grades for middle school because we know we could control up to that point. After that, we don't know who has access and who doesn't. We do believe we may have enough devices to begin working and ensure that the middle school students as well have devices, but that may take some time.
I'd also like to add that it really is learning for learning sake and that our teachers are keeping a tight. Watch on their kids and their classes who are engaged. Through these devices, you can see who's online, who's not online, who's connected, who hasn't. We do foresee some students not progressing as they should. And we're kind of in the thought process, it's too much in advance right now with the task at hand. Of using some of those federal dollars to be able to stand up some additional time for kids in school if needed. It might look the same as it does depending on the state of health in our state. But that additional options for kids to be able to continue to learn, to be sure they are where they are. Is something that we're looking into. And we're using this and the teacher's expertise to know where our kids at this time. But we may have additional school.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. But I just want to mention that Dave Donnelly has joined us and Margo, you are next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is like a Herculean effort. I just cannot even imagine. In my years of experience, having to put something like this together, the staff, the teachers, the parents. They are, I mean, you got, we got to just get through this. And the work that's been done is just absolutely heroic. My question has to do with, are there families that we have not been able to reach or kids? I mean, are teachers, are teachers continuing to make calls or track, make sure they contact all their kids? And if there are kids we cannot contact, is there a plan? Do we have a plan for that outreach?
Madam President, to Member Bellamy, we've been able to get through, we're pretty confident that we've reached. Our first initial needs assessments were showing between 45 and 48,000 families and parents. Now there's been duplicates and all that. And yes, we are still finding people that we have not been able to get through. Our English language learner programs have been reaching out, the migrant programs have been reaching out. And they are working through those processes and implementing, putting those names into our address spreadsheet so that we can start mailing them packets of information. And so yes, we are, we're getting close to getting through as many, almost all of. And so, yes, we, we are, we're getting close to getting through as many, almost all of them, but we still have some yet to go.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. We have next in the queue, Dina Mitchell.
Yeah, and I echo what everybody has said about these efforts. It's just amazing. I was over at West today watching them hand out Chromebooks and the operation they have set up there. And I'm sure it was the same at every high school. It was just wonderful. To follow up on Member Bellamy's question, I'm just concerned about the kids and our CIT kids. But also, you know, we talk about having our parents as partners and parents as, I can't remember what the term was for the case year six. There are many parents who are not computer literate, don't know how to use Google Docs. Their kids don't know how to use that. We have parents who don't speak English, who really, this is so far outside of their comfort zone. How are we supporting those families?
I, I can share a little bit. We have different, whether it's our ELL department. Sonya has made some personal calls to be able to really work with families using social distancing. As they come up and are reported by the teachers, we are just tackling, tackling them one at a time depending on what the competencies are, what their capacity is to assist. This is really kind of delicate because we're not going to have any staff if staff get, that, that are able to work. That's why we're very, very critical at the dispersment sites. We're trying to find a way to mail the packets and then really do it working face to face, meeting with families. I know that Sonya Hunt has done some of that, as well as ELL, to be able to address individual families. We've also gone through their liaison. So a lot of the families, refugee families have a liaison in the city. And we've worked through and been able to solve some problems through those liaisons to help have an additional support in the community to direct. I can't promise that everything is going to be perfect because, again, we are on, you know, we're kind of on a, a, a stay put, hunker down. So as we find these and we have the capacity of people to go address it, we're deploying them. Otherwise, really trying to work through the technologies. Once again, our biggest fear is that the people who have to do the face-to-face work, that, that they have to stay absolutely healthy in order for that to continue. So we're just, everything has to be approved. It can't just be go out and do this. And a lot of times we've had to pull teachers back from their wishes to, to go because we're, we certainly need everyone healthy at this time and, and need to follow the, the, what our city has said and, and the direction from our mayor and governor. But if you hear of anyone that's a one-off or anything, please present it to us and then we troubleshoot one at a time. They're out there, we know that. But the best we can do is, the best we can do is, is find it, address it, work with staff, find resources. It's literally just, you know, finding one additional piece here and there.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, quickly.
Just, I, I know this is like a secondary thing. It takes a lot of resources to do volunteers, but I know there are a lot of people in the community who are looking for ways to help our students. And I wonder if, I'm kind of just thinking out loud, I wonder if there's a way for them to FaceTime with some of the students. You know, people could volunteer to FaceTime with a student an hour a day if those students have the technology and just help them answer questions, particularly if their parents aren't native English speakers, then these people might be able to help them work through some of that schoolwork. If our teachers weren't helped, I mean, our teachers are written with a lot of kids.
That, that's, that's a great idea. I know that that's what Cindy's doing with our aides too and other people who aren't necessarily needed in particular areas, is building that competency and those trainings that you saw. We're building the competencies and other staff to be able to help. But we've did receive, you know, some information from, like I mentioned, the refugee. That's exactly what's going on, is that they're the, the go-between to get the information. So I would say that we'll continue to do that as we know. And then hopefully, as we can deploy other educators to be able to do that, give more time to kids is exactly the suggestion is what, what, what is needed in many times.
Thank you. Ms. Vakalas.
I've got three questions, but I think they're all fairly simple questions because they're clarifying. The, and I'll just put all three of them out there and maybe Dr. Bishop can maybe tackle all of them very quickly. I didn't capture the slide number, but we're getting the federal funding, you know, threatening that's coming down. And I understand instead of summer school, we're going to do a four-week extension to our regular school, something that is already funded in our current budget? Or is that, cannot possibly come out of the, the federal funding that might be coming down, you know, through the state stuff, was my first question. My second question was, you know, as a parent of three kids at all these levels, I know I'm being absolutely bombarded with everything, but working my way through it. So I'm just, I'm impressed with everything that's going on. Everything seems like it's geared towards the mainstream. You know, and yes, you address like gifted and the sped community, stuff like that. But what about some of our optional programs that we're, you know, really proud of? And some of the nuances that some of their programs have, whether it's the language immersion or the STEM schools? How are they going to be able to keep that, you know, rigor as part of their program? And then my last question, and if this one wants to get addressed a different way or at a different time, that's okay with me as well, is what we're doing similar to other states around the country? Is this, you know, becoming a nationwide, you know, pull-together kind of a thing? Or are we doing a different delivery and the way we're handling our grades, you know, for our middle school students and stuff like that? Where it's not hitting their transcript because it's not as, as relevant? But are, are we doing a collective thing or are we kind of blazing our own path in some ways? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll tackle the, the, the easy one first, the one on grades. So are we blazing a path? What I can tell you, Dr. Bishop asked me to serve, sit in for her on a national panel. We were on a panel with, with eight different districts nationwide. And there was hundreds of superintendents around the, the country listening in on our discussions. And what I can tell you is that there were districts, some of them very large, who chose not to do anything because they were afraid that they were not able to meet equity. Our approach was a little different in that we staggered equity in the sense that we wanted to guarantee that every senior and every high school student had a device, had access, who were in credit-bearing classes, whose lives in post-secondary world was not disrupted. So that was our approach to make sure we did that. And then we tried to work that downward to, to be, ensure that as much as we could. That might be a little different than what I've seen in, in some other places. Others were on the other end of extreme. There are some who had what we call one-to-one initiatives and they had technology for every kid in the entire district, K through 12 years ago. We've not had that luxury because of funding issues in Alaska. But, so we, we did a measured approach where we kind of worked it, worked it that way to, to guarantee how our high school kids first and then on down. So I'll tackle that one. I'll let Dr. Bishop handle the funding question if she would like.
So in regard to the federal funding, the specifics about that, what was that particular question again?
I'm just trying to clarify if we are swapping out our summer school program completely for this four-week extension and it's something that we already did? Or if we can use the federal funding to help supplement the?
That's right. Okay, so I touched on it a little bit. Right now, the summer school that we already do, we want to ensure that the seniors get through and we want that to happen by June 30th because that would be the graduating the same year. With the federal funds, there's a great deal of flexibility. And what we see, and it kind of ties back to Member Hildy's question about what are we going to do for kids? We see that kids that might be behind or even kids that want to get ahead and have a choice summer school that we might, if we can get face-to-face, that we could bring kids back early. Or we can continue some online and building capacity there and competencies. So we are looking at that as an option for this summer to just, but we're playing it by ear to, to let us know, know where things are. And your last question I can do very quickly in regard to, because Dan Barker, Mark and I talked about it, that all the opportunities and the instruction and the platforms that are available for schools to utilize are absolutely available for our special mission schools, alternative schools, for immersion schools. And so the platforms there and the content is standardized to be able to be customized. And different schools are, are looking at that and then deciding what pieces are they going to take? And then what pieces are they going to additionally create? And certainly, the director Brandon Locke is working with the language schools as well as just the resources at the district office are really for anyone. And so we're working through each, each of those, what the school wants to see. Some of the schools picked up on this initially and then are going to adjust it as they move forward with particular, you know, changes that their teachers then can make. If Mark wants to add anything to that, you're, you're welcome. I think I, I touched base on what we talked about.
You covered it.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Holloman, you are next.
Thank you. I can make the comment just from my own experience in technology. And I'm speaking obviously more to the board because I think that probably knows this. This is a tremendous amount of work. And often in a rollout like this, especially at the beginning, things go marvelously well. There are a lot of families and students that are ready for this, that can adapt to it easily and they snap it up. And you sort of like plunging clean on the end of the water and it's a great feeling. And then you start to deal with some of the families that aren't quite ready or students that are having some difficulties. And then you start to deal with some of the families that really aren't ready. And then you eventually work your way down to folks that, that really don't like this and don't even want it to work necessarily. So unfortunately, it, it goes great at the beginning to a degree and then it gets harder and harder and harder. And I know that's, that's going to be a struggle that we face. It also is, unfortunately, it, it does create more of a divide in the people that pick up tech quickly. They'll move right along into content and continue to learn and do the things we think of. A lot, on the other end of the scale, there are going to be people consumed by just learning this process and trying to get going. So it, it's going to be interesting to see how this develops. But I, I do think it's a huge undertaking with, with a tremendous response by the district. And given the fact that we don't really have an idea of when this ends, it makes a lot of sense to me that we're doing it this strongly and robustly with the idea of this, this may be the way we do school for a bit. One other thing I did want to touch on to the superintendent, and this goes more to funding. If there are any indications of the governor plans vetoes in any part, if you've gotten any sense that there are parts of the funding Billy doesn't like or that he feels the whole thing is too large, has to be trimmed back. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if you have any knowledge on that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question through the president to Member Holloman. I actually have not heard, I think, anything about the vetoes or planned. I certainly believe that school has to be a success in the state of Alaska and supporting schools is paramount at this point in time, given our, our circumstances and, and they need to work. So I can't imagine pulling back on what the, the House and the Senate had agreed upon in their conference committee. But if I hear of anything, I'll certainly let you know. But he has been thus far in the process, very supportive of, of the needs that we've talked through our commissioner up the chain. And we've been, had, had great response there. So I was, I was happy to, to see that now that though the legislature's done. I, I don't have any insights, but certainly I'll, I'll share with you once I do. And, and I do want to share that while Member Mitchell asked a question, I did receive some update from Jenny Knutson that bridge builders and Catholic Social Services are, are assisting with our, our students in need and, and families in need in regard to this. And maybe just trying to think outside the box as we move forward about how we can build capacity for that.
So thank you. Oh, I do see a couple other hands. I, I'm going to ask a couple of questions and then I'll, I'll call. And I know we're going a little bit longer, but I think this is important. One of the questions I've had is what happens with our students that are failing in their third quarter and don't have that opportunity to improve their grades? Will we be holding any students back based on those third grade, those third quarter grades?
Madam President?
Did we lose Mark?
Yes, I think he, he just dropped his connection.
Right. I could share that we did discuss this, that we wouldn't want anyone to fail. And so that, Dr. Stock and I did, that we would want to go to improvement. That if there was an opportunity for a teacher to help a child because they just couldn't get this failure or even this D or maybe the B was the one that, you know, I can't have a B, that certainly we would expect our, our teachers to reach out on an individual basis with, to support children and to be able to assign perhaps the work that they had missed or didn't get done. So Mark, I was, she was just, are you, you had the question, then you bleeped out. So I'll, I shared that it's technically kind of a, an individual opportunity for teachers to work with kids through that request. And if there's any other thing, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sorry, my internet went down and now it's back up. So, and by the way, that's going on all over the country right now as everybody in the country is trying to access bandwidth right now. But anyway, so over the summer, we'll, we'll be offering extended opportunities for folks. And so on an individual basis, as Dr. Bishop just mentioned, if there are students who are failing and they need that extra fourth quarter with grades and, and things, we'll work individually with those students to figure it out. That's part of the beauty to the online piece is that it's, it's asynchronous and it can be done at the student's pace. And people can actually catch up and actually close gaps quickly, working one subject at a time. So there's some opportunity here to help in that area.
And Madam President, one more thing, high school students, second, all secondary students at the secondary level. So that's our middle schools up. They do have an opportunity to make up things they missed in third quarter if they want that third quarter grade to, you know, be more solid. If they weren't happy about third quarter too, they can make up third quarter grades. I just got the info from Kirsten Johnson.
So my next question is, it's kind of confusing because it says sixth through eighth grade on the middle school, although we have sixth graders in elementary school too. So are we including those sixth graders in the middle school model? Or is that just middle schools that have sixth grade included already? I went out, and that was on slide 19.
So I would let Dan Barker want to tackle that one. We've, we've got sixth graders, as you know, that are in both elementary and middle school. So Dan, do you want to tackle that one?
Sure, thank you. For President Marsette, as you referenced, we, we will continue in the elementary level for our kiddos who are at a sixth grade building plant or had been, to move them through that elementary progression. In many cases, that's what their parents have asked for and what they're expecting from their experience. Again, also, as you heard both Dr. Bishop and Dr. Stock reference, if we end up in one-off situations within particular students, we can certainly customize or adjust to meet the needs of any individual kid or family as they go forward. But for the, from the elementary lens, we would treat our sixth graders in elementary campuses as an elementary student. So that moves forward that way. And my understanding would be that sixth graders at the middle school level would also then be treated as part of a middle school. I'm sure with that same consideration for individual needs if it comes up.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple other questions, but I'm going to move on. Margo, Ms. Bellamy, you had another question?
Yeah, thank, a technology question, just a couple of quick ones. So how long will the free internet be available? And what, what does it actually mean, like reduced costs? Like, so if a family already has internet, they would get a reduced cost like during this time?
Yeah, so I can tackle that on, on both fronts. Right now, the, they're offering free internet through the end of the school year, so the published school year. But as things go along, we'll continue to work with that group to see if there are any options as we move forward. ACS is offering a 10% discount across the board to all of our staff members and, and students moving forward in perpetuity. And GCI is offering a plan up from whatever you have right now. So if you had a lower plan, you could call in and they would actually give you the next plan up. So that you don't hit your caps or, or data limits, that sort of stuff. So that if teachers are using their connection and say they had a middle range, now they have an upper range. That, that's what that means.
And then the final one has to do with the Chromebooks that are going out. They're, they're, they're basically firewalled and all of that so that kids can't use them for, for not so good things.
Yeah, so we, we do three things to do that. If they get a MiFi from us, that MiFi. If they get a MiFi from us, that MiFi is actually filtered. So even if they were to get another device in the house and connect to it, it would still be filtered. And then on the Chromebook itself, we have some software that filters. And then we run them back through what's called our domain name service or system. And we actually filter their searches and that sort of stuff as well.
Okay, thank you. We have definitely ran over our time. I've got Dina and Dave Donley. And then I'm going to follow up and we'll probably need to close out of this. So, Dina Mitchell.
Thank you. A couple of things just real quickly. First of all, when Ms. Anderson talked about the fact that there, there are shared lessons happening across the sped department and also training opportunities being offered to sped teachers as their schedules are more flexible than they would be in a traditional situation. I'm hoping that that type of thing is happening in the gen ed side of the house as well. I also wanted to just say that I'm really pleased to hear about the partnership with Alaska Public Media and pleased that they got added into the budget this year. And I just wanted to move back to what Member Holloman was talking about in terms of the wonderful operating budget that was passed and the fact that bond debt reimbursement has been added and the 30 million, as well as a couple of other things that are really important to us. And I just wanted to ask if there is, I know Dr. Bishop had worked with a group of other educational leaders across the state to really support the reading legislation. Wondering or hoping that a similar type of effort will be developed to support, to encourage the governor to sign this and not to fine item those items like he did last year.
Thank you. Mr. Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, I just want to thank our tech people for getting me into the meeting a couple of minutes late. But I could hear what was going on before, but thank you very much for their help.
Thank you. So just a couple of other questions I wanted to follow up very quickly on our IEPs. Are we having to make amendments to those if we can't meet them as they're written? Or are we okay with our requirements for that?
Ms. Anderson, would you like to tackle that one?
I have to apologize. Can you repeat the question?
The question is, with the way we're delivering this now, are we in compliance with our IEPs? Are we able to follow them? Or are we having to legally write amendments to these IEPs?
Well, so we have, what we're doing is we are set up so that we can talk with parents, have meetings. They're limited though, because we have to get, we, we're not having full IEP meetings. But what we're doing is writing a, what we call a prior written notice. And so we're talking to families about what the services will look like now and addressing how we will serve them through this new online platform. And whether parents can access the online platform or whether they'll need it in packets, whether they'll need phone calls, whether students will need tutoring through this process. And so they're writing prior written notices to design the delivery of services. And again, if, if something is not working, we can contact families or families in contact and we can revise that prior written notice. But rather than revising all IEPs, which is a Herculean task in itself with 7,268 special education students, we are using the prior written notice process and we checked to see what other districts were doing when we did this, so.
Okay, thank you very much. One other thing, our charter schools, are they falling underneath this plan? Or are they doing their own plans?
Madam President, charter schools will have the same access that all of our optional programs has and that is to use any of the content that we've created. And so just like always, they often have their own units and their own type of instructional strategies that they can access. But any of them can access any of our online content that, that is available to all.
Okay, thank you. And one other thing, are we taking care of our teachers and our staff as far as mental health? You know, these are, I have to tell you, the first couple of days, all I wanted to do is pull the covers over my head and stay in bed. So I had to get refocused myself. But, you know, these are, these are really difficult times. And I just want to make sure that we are somehow checking in on our staff and teachers and making sure that they are doing well and whatever they need in the way of any support, mental health wise or any way, or any way else, and the same with everyone else that we're addressing that.
You know, really, it's, it's everybody. You're, you're right. And especially teachers. And as you know, this is, we, we've really tried to set the expectations that it's okay, that we're going to focus on people and focus on kids and focus on each other before we focus on content. We have done two video messages to staff from me to really settle like, it's okay. It's going to be rocky. We're going to get through it together. Individual principals support daily check ins with staff through Zoom. And they have all kinds of fun things that they, they do together. Those are getting shorter and shorter as, as teachers are taking on the business with kids now, of course. But staff meetings are still staff meetings to check in. And we're sending their, we're trying to answer their questions in regard to salary and pay and leave and, and just their supports right away when there is a concern or they troubleshoot. We have reached out. We, we very quickly solve the problems that our folks have so that they can deliver curriculum. We're also meeting daily with Tom Claymire. If he hears of any issues coming up that he wanted to share, that he shares with us and we troubleshoot together. But each division, whether it's food service, IT, finances, HR, the instruction side, everybody is really given 110% to make this work. And we know that educators that are in the quote cyber classrooms are really important to this task. What I'm trying to ask is that the people that really also take care of, the people that are on this video, they won't take no for an answer. I've been asking them to, to pull off a little bit. Emails are sent at 12:38 in the morning, just work is being done at 4:00 AM. Their staff as well. So Jenny's group and the curriculum coordinators, they literally are working around the clock to support teachers so that it can go smoother in the classrooms.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just want to say in response to the funding through our legislators, it never hurts to send the governor a message if that's what you want to do. Just, you know, let him know that we certainly hope they'll support the educational funding. And I have read through all the Board Connect and all the letters and all the correspondence. And just as long as it took me to read through everything that you provided, I can only imagine how much it took, time it took to just develop those things that are going into place. So thank you again from, wow, it's, it, well, it makes the earthquake look a little not so important anymore. I just want to say again, thank you. And Dina, I see you have your hand up very quickly.
I wanted to just say that, that it might have been Dina Mitchell. I just want to say thank you to the board for being supportive through this. We've really felt your support and appreciate it as well, Member President Marsete. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to just tag on to what President Marsete said. And I hope that every single person in the district, every single person out there, we know how hard they're working and how stressful this is while they're juggling their own family and their own safety. And I hope that they truly understand how, how much they're appreciated. And I've heard from the general community too, that people are just amazed at how well the district is handling this. And it really comes down to, from, you know, from the TAs and the people delivering meals on up. It's, people really, really do understand how hard this is and really appreciate it.
So I'm going to sign off, but the only thing I've got to say is this too shall pass, as all things do. We'll be wiser and stronger. And boy, are we going to have one heck of a party when it's over left. So at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, team.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.